This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the Eau Claire Area School Board. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM.
...for the school board, but before we do that, we have a request for our outgoing president so that he can make a few comments.
Thank you, Dr. Hardabek. I wanted to take the opportunity at the start of this meeting to share that I will not be seeking a second term as president of the school board. I would sum up my experience in four words: engaging, exciting, humbling, and challenging. It has been a great honor to work for and with all of you as board president. I'm especially proud of our work together over the past year to make policy reforms on sexual harassment, mental health services, student voter registration, a ban of e-cigarettes and vaping, the creation of a new revenue committee, the approval of a new Spanish dual immersion program, and the creation of a new virtual school, and so much more. I hope that my service in this role has shown our students that leaders don't have to be loud and boisterous or intimidating. They can be compassionate, soft-spoken, active listeners, and kind-hearted. I will always be proud to say that I'm the youngest ever and first openly gay president in the history of the district, and I hope sincerely that the young people out there that perhaps feel a bit different might have seen something of themselves in me. I've decided against seeking a second term as president primarily because I believe very strongly that the leadership position of board president should be shared and rotated among board members when possible. We have a very solid and very committed group of board members, and any one of my colleagues would do a great job as our next president. No longer serving as president will also give me a very valuable commodity, more of it time, to dedicate to some other ventures. I'm looking forward to remaining with all of you as a member of the board in the coming year and continuing to advocate for what's best for children, which is what this work has always been about for me and I'm sure for all of you. I would like to thank some individuals without whom I would not have been successful over the past year. I want to thank our school board secretary Patty Iverson. I want to thank our dedicated superintendent, Dr. Hardabek, and our executive team. I want to thank my friend and vice president Erin Harder, and my predecessor Chris Humbok Boyle, and all of my board colleagues. I want to thank my parents and siblings. I want to thank our staff and students, and I want to thank all of you for your support, encouragement, and faith in me. As we move forward, I believe that we must always be mindful that the ultimate strength and success of our district and of any organization relies on how we listen to one another, and in particular for our district, how we listen to the educators working in our classrooms and to the children and young people in our community. In closing, and as we enter our officer elections for the 2019-20 school year, I would like to say that each and every member of our board has great leadership capacity, and I know that working together, we will be able to accomplish wonderful things over the coming year. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you again for the opportunity. It's been an honor.
Thank you. Thank you for your service as the board president, and we look forward to your continued service as a board member. So at this time, we will begin the annual organizational meeting, and I will turn it over to our executive director of business services Abby Johnson to hold the nominations and the election.
Good evening, board members. Are there any nominations for president of the school board for the 1920 year?
I nominate Dr. Eric Torres for president.
Dr. Eric Torres has been nominated. Are there any other nominations?
I nominate Erin Harder for president.
Erin Harder has also been nominated for president. Are there other nominations? Are there any other nominations for board president? All right, then it sounds like we have two nominations and we'll need to do a ballot vote. So Secretary Iverson is going to pass out a ballot. If you can please put your vote on there, then I can let you know who the winner will be.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I wonder what people thought about giving the nominees just an opportunity to make a brief statement if they so desired, or if people had questions for them?
I would look to you as a board to make that decision. If you choose that's acceptable, the board would just need to agree upon it. Okay, so it sounds like the board is in agreement to allow each nominee to make a statement and share, or other board members to ask questions of each candidate. So, Dr. Torres, since you were nominated first, I would ask you to go first.
Thank you for the nomination to serve as president of the Board of Education. I think that it is very important that we continue to work towards the goals that we have established for the school district and then take a leap forward for the next 10 years. There are four main ideas that I would like to present as lead ideas. The first one would be to reduce and close the achievement gap, as goes hand in hand with our practice of fiscal responsibility. And I say this in the first place because we are pretty close to produce the first ESSA report to the Department of Public Instruction, and I see it as an investment of federal funds in exchange for transparency on how states are doing in serving all groups of students, especially low-income, students of color, and special education. There is an important job to be done. We need to assess, evaluate, and rate schools annually based on how they are doing. They must clearly indicate, we must clearly indicate if a school is consistently underperforming and needs, and if it needs an improvement plan. And I think that as a Board of Education, we have to play an active role in that process. Our district must articulate improvement plans, including resource equity review processes for those schools, and we need to make a plan on how we're going to do that. The re-conceptualization of LEAP zones, for example, is a very good step forward in that process because it aligns innovation with equity. We need to move forward to a model that tells us the actual per pupil expenditures per building as well. The second idea is, we board as a team need to work with a superintendent together. We need to ask ourselves, how do governance practices affect student achievement, and how can we create a mechanism to receive input from principals and teachers about their strategies included in their improvement plans? I think that that conversation needs to happen, and we need to find the spaces and the right time in the year to do so. The third idea would be a call for a balanced governance, and we need to create a model for school board effectiveness. Given the pressure to improve student outcomes on everything from content knowledge to skills identified as necessary for career and college success, school boards like us cannot be passive actors or actresses. Neither can we replace the specialized knowledge of superintendents and administrators trained in the complex matters of running school districts. However, boards that leverage their own expertise as engaged and knowledgeable representatives of their communities can play a critical role in increasing student achievement, that I do believe. School systems that grant more autonomy to schools to define and elaborate their curriculum and assessment perform better than systems that don't, and we have an idea of how to do that. There is a positive correlation in school autonomy for resource allocation to address self-identified needs for improvement and improved student performance. And finally, the fourth idea, lead idea, would be a call for a comprehensive development plan 2020-2030. Where do we see ourselves in 10 years? How do we want to grow? What change needs to, what changes need to, do we need to address? And are we being able to articulate our efforts with other stakeholders' development plans? I think that as a Board of Education in Eau Claire, we have both legitimate interest and professional capacity to lead that discussion with other leaders in the community. And for all that, I think that our action as a team would be very important.
So, thanks too for the nomination, and, well, it's just, it's a real privilege for me to be part of this board. This is a group of folks that I've come to know over the last couple of years, and I feel real privileged to be part of this. I don't have an education background. I come from more of a business, computer science background, and to, I've learned a lot from everybody that I've worked with on the board, and I'm grateful for that. And being a school board member is kind of a tough job. Being school board president, I think, makes it a little tougher, but it's something, it's a service, it's a service, like the service all of us are doing, and it's a service I would be honored to do for this, for this group. So, that's, that's why I'm running.
Okay, so you all should have a ballot, and if you can write the name of the candidate that you choose, then we can collect them and read them off. Okay, the first vote is for Dr. Torres. The second vote is for Commissioner Harder. The third vote is for Dr. Torres. The fourth vote is for Commissioner Harder. The fifth vote is for Dr. Torres. The sixth vote is for Doc, or for Commissioner Harder. Looks like we have a tie going into the last one. And the final vote is for Dr. Torres. So, a vote four to three would make Dr. Torres the new school board principal. Congratulations.
So, thank you very much, and thank you, Joe Luganville, for your leadership and for the script that you just left me here. So, we need to continue with the nominations process, and our next office would be vice president. So, are there any nominations for vice president of the board?
I would like to nominate Dr. Lori Bika for vice president.
Dr. Lori Bika has been nominated. Would you accept the nomination? Are there any other nominations?
Yeah, I'd also like to nominate Dr. Bika.
Dr. Bika has been nominated twice.
Just to be sure.
Do you accept again? Are there, are there any other nominations? So we don't have any other, any other nomination? We don't have to vote, correct? So we'll have a motion to elect by acclamation? Is that the process?
Sure.
Okay. So those who...
I move that we elect Dr. Bika to the position of board vice president by unanimous voice vote, unanimous ballot.
I second.
Those who approve, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, same sign. Those who abstain, Dr. Bika has been elected vice president of the Board of Education. Congratulations. Our next office for election is that of treasurer. Are there any nominations for treasurer?
I'd like to nominate Joe Luganville.
I'm sorry?
I'd like to nominate Joe Luganville for treasurer.
Joe Luganville has been nominated for treasurer. Mr. Luganville, do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Are there other, any other nominations? Being non, then we don't have to vote. I'll entertain a motion to elect Joe Luganville as treasurer for, as treasurer.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Those who approve, say aye. Those who oppose, same sign. And those who abstain. Mr. Luganville, you've been elected treasurer despite your willingness to remain at large. Congratulations. Our next office is Secretary of the Board of Education.
Excuse me, President Torres, we forgot clerk and clerk designee.
Clerk.
Yes.
That was the word that I was looking. Are there any nominations for clerk?
I would like, I would like to nominate Lori King Hammer for clerk.
Lori King Hammer has been nominated. Do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Are there, are there any other nominations? Hearing non, then we will not proceed to vote with ballots, but I'll entertain a motion to elect Lori King Hammer as clerk.
So moved. Second.
Those who approve, say aye. Those who oppose, same sign. Lori King Hammer has been elected clerk of the Board of Education. Congratulations. We need to elect clerk designee.
I would like to nominate Ms. Abby Johnson for clerk designee.
Ms. Abby Johnson has been nominated. Do you accept the nomination?
Yes, I will accept the nomination.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing non, then we'll vote to elect Ms. Abby Johnson as clerk designee. Those who approve, say aye.
We need a motion. I'll make the motion to elect her clerk designee.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. So, we will vote to, those who approve, say aye. Those who oppose, same sign. Ms. Abby Johnson, congratulations, you're the new clerk designee of the Board of Education. Thank you very much. So what's next on the agenda? My computer went off.
Next is secretary.
We need a secretary.
I'll nominate Patty Iverson for board secretary.
Patty Iverson has been nominated. Do you accept the nomination?
For two meetings, I will, yes.
Well, that gives us a little time. Are there any other nominations? If not, I'll entertain a motion to elect Patty Iverson as secretary of the board.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Those who approve, say aye. Those who oppose, same sign. Ms. Iverson, you've been elected secretary again. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Will we proceed to the new seating arrangement next session? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the organizational meeting.
I believe you can just call it adjourned.
Okay, well, let's adjourn the meeting, the organizational meeting. And now we have a time for public forum. Our public forum is open to the public, as it says. We will not hear personal complaints of school personnel, nor any person connected with the school system at this time. We have five persons willing to speak. The first one is Krista Cockett-Rutz. Please come to the front and say your name and address. If you could, please go to the, to the mic. It's ready, it's already on for you.
My name is Krista Cockett-Rutz. My address is S. 11160 County Road F., Elleva, Wisconsin. I do live in the Eau Claire school district though. And I am here on my daughter's behalf. So I have three daughters. One's in third grade at Metaview, one is in the 4K program at Days Gone By right now, and then my youngest daughter, who is two right now, was born September 6th. And I would like her, she'll be turning three in September, and then in 2020, she'll be turning four, and I would like her to start four-year-old kindergarten, or your EC4T program at that time. And I called about a year ago when I found out about the September 1st cutoff, and was told, oh yeah, we have an early admissions program, and she went through everything that I would have to do to go through that. And then when I called again this spring, I actually came down to the, to the office to talk to somebody to figure out what the procedure was. I know that I'm way ahead of time, but I wanted to know what the procedures were. And I was told that there is no procedure for early admittance to EC4T. And I said, okay, so what do I do? And she said, well, what you would have to do is allow her to start EC4T when, on September 1st, she's four, but turning five on September 6th, and then request her to be evaluated. And if we, based on the determination, we determine that she's gifted and talented, we would then approve her to move to kindergarten in that same year. And the earliest that she would be able to then move to kindergarten in that same year would be just after Thanksgiving. And I went home and thought about this, and thought about my other two daughters. One of them was born in May, and one of them was born in July, so all of my kids are kind of on the, I'm sorry, last, last part of the year. And the more that I thought about it, the more that I felt like I was putting Zoe's kind of life on hold for an entire year. Emma, my first daughter, I don't know that she would have been ready to start a year ahead of time, but all my girls do at home is pretend play school. My oldest daughter, Emma, wants to be a teacher. And Lucy, when she started the EC4T program, the Fall Pals Assessment, she had all of the spring benchmarks. And so I'm worried that if Zoe is made, has to wait a whole nother year to start EC4T, she's going to be, get bored for that year. Also, I am worried about her social and emotional skills being missed by condensing her two years of EC4T in kindergarten into one year. And so I'm, I guess, requesting that the policy be reviewed and possibly changed, if that's possible. I did research on it, and I apologize, I don't have copies for everyone, but I do have research to kind of back up my request as far as why it's important to start them when they're ready. That's what I have to say.
Thank, thank you very much.
Yes, that'd be great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next person in line is Mark Goings.
Good evening. My name is Mark Goings. I live at E. 17450 County Road V in Augusta. Several days ago, I was speaking with a young teacher here in the district. He and his wife had, had a child, it was about a year ago. Asked how that's going, and he said, oh, it's great being a father. Asked how that's going, and he said, "Oh, it's great being a father, and school year's going beautifully and everything." And then, I heard this pause. And it was just after, as a school board, we... Or you voted on the insurance. He said, "I got to tell you, Mark, my wife and I are considering when we could have our second child." And I was like, "Well, tell me more about that." And his concern was the rate that the employee portion of the deductible has changed over the last two years. So, I went back and started doing some research on this. In the last two years, the employee portion of the deductible, of the insurance deductible, has gone up by 700%. That's far higher than the combined level movement in CPI increase. And for the individual that's having an event year, that's a major increased expense in a very short time. But for the individual who's unfortunate or was going through a second or a third year in a row, an increase like that in that short a time can be financially devastating. Now, when the board was discussing purveya and security, the bridge is never really brought up in that discussion. And largely, that's because the bridge is not about our insurance companies. The bridge is about us. What I encourage the board to consider now, that we now know what the deductible is going to be, that they consider a targeted expansion of our bridge program. And in targeting that, it's important for the board to realize that this is an opportunity to offer a benefit to all, which is only actually used by a very few. And while I know that the district can't do everything, I hope you do realize for that individual in that event year that that could be everything. So, please, I encourage you to examine a targeted expansion of the bridge. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person in line is Chris Hamushboy.
Bet you didn't think I'd show up at your first meeting. It's Teacher Appreciation Week. So, as a parent of two kids who went to the district, as an educator in a long time in this district, and as a previous board member, I want to thank our teachers, educators, classroom assistants, and all those in the district that support them, which is everyone else, including the Board of Education, our school board. No one does their job alone. And on an aside, I will also be a grandma of an incoming kindergartner who is moving back to Eau Claire from Cleveland, Ohio. So, I'm going to do a different role now, too. So, thanks, everybody. I can't thank this district enough for what you do for our community and for our kids.
Thank you very much. The next person is Amber Cadiz. Cadiz.
My name is Amber Cadiz. I live on Hartcell Lane. And yes, I am one of the many families that have to deal with the Roosevelt and Sam Davie exchange. And I am... Our family is devastated. I have a family of four. I have a seven-year-old second grader at Roosevelt. I have a fifth grader at Roosevelt. And I have two high schoolers, ninth grade and 12th grade. And we've only been living in the school district for just under five years. And we've been wanting to move to Eau Claire for years. We chose Eau Claire. Yes, it's bigger, not always better, but we wanted the atmosphere. We chose Roosevelt. We could have had any school in Eau Claire. We could have had any school outside of Eau Claire, including Fall Creek, Triple Falls, et cetera. But we wanted Roosevelt. We wanted DeLonge. We wanted North. And our family is devastated that we have to go through this again. Reason... One of the reasons why we left our other school district, because of the lack of stability that we had. And for now, our daughter has to go through this again, our second grader. She has special needs. A little bit emotional about this because she has anxiety. And going through that change with an IEP, going through the middle school stuff that we have to worry about, our family's complicated because of the changes that we have to make with our family. And I'm worried about her... Not only her academics, but her mental, emotional, and social needs. If she moves to Sam Davie, that would be her fourth and fifth grade year. And in fourth grade, she's going to spend that year transitioning, leaving her friends from Roosevelt, leaving her staff, her teachers, the IEP team, and starting all over again. Fourth grade, she can get along, she can make friends, yes. But if she makes her friends there, she's going to have to leave them again. She's going to spend her fourth grade year trying to make friends, trying to get established, only to turn around in fifth grade if she makes friends to start all over again. She's going to have to leave her friends again to go to DeLonge, because that's our school. And we hope to do DeLonge because we already have three kids that will be going there. And I'm just... The chaos, the extra stress that it's going to cause for my daughter to have to switch for two years, a year or two, that's two years of not having a stability, two years of not having a place that she can go home with school. This mental aspect of it is just unfinamental stress. And I can't think about why you would do that to any of those kids. There's 100 kids, yes, they're going to get affected. And our neighborhood alone, in a cul-de-sac, we have not only a dozen kids from Roosevelt, we have one family from St. James, two families that go to Sherman, one that goes to Montessori, one that goes to Eau Claire, one goes to Altoona, and one's homeschooled, on top of the middle school and high schoolers, about a dozen each of those, too. So, yes, and she also has friends at Northwoods because of Girl Scouts. But she needs that stability. And that's what I'm concerned about the most. I've already been through it. And we know how hard it is for them. So, please, I'm pleading to you guys, think about the overall aspect of that, the challenge of that. And I know it's going to be hard, but those 100 kids, that's going to be tough. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Nick Novak.
Nick Novak, 210 Ferry Street, Eau Claire, Wisconsin, Shawtown neighborhood. Hello, and thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. I have a few questions and a little bit of commentary for the board's consideration. As a student and as a teacher in the Eau Claire Area School District, I used to rail vociferously and satirically against standardized testing. These tests always seem to waste time and resources, a poor measure of what school should be. But I had a change of heart, and now I am for standardized testing, but with this qualifier. If such a test is to be administered for the greater good, it should consist of the following question, the following question alone. Do you like school? If the answer is yes, congratulations, the district passes. If, however, the answer is no, the student or staff member taking the test must explain why, honestly, and with a list of constructive criticisms and learning proposals that might actually assist them in enjoying school. That's it. That's the whole test. How many of you believe that students and staff here in the Eau Claire Area School District go to school enthusiastically, ready to affect their communities both critically and constructively for the greater good of all? More particularly, as it gets to the heart of the land schools proposal, which you'll hear in a little bit, right now, what opportunities do high school students have to do independent interdisciplinary outdoor projects that get them away from their desks, that get their brains firing and their hands dirty? I am for any and all opportunities within the system and from outside the system for students and teachers to engage in meaningful, relevant, unconventional education. This land school thing, however grumpy and stoic I may sometimes be, this idea for a school causes me uncontrollable joy. If you approve of it, you're all invited to my house, where I will cook you a scrumptious breakfast of the best goddamn bacon and eggs anywhere in the Chippewa Valley. Thanks again. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. That concludes our list of speakers for tonight. Our next point in the agenda is the superintendent's report.
So, I have a number of activities to review for the school board, starting with May 7th. And the following meetings will be held at the administration building. The first one is at May 7th, and that is the Family Advisory Council. That's at 7:00 PM. The LEAP Committee will meet on May 14th at 4:00 PM. Demographic Trends and Facility Planning Committee will meet May 16th at 4:30 PM. The Revenue Committee will meet May 17th at 3:00 PM. The Policy and Governance Committee will meet May 20th at 8:45 AM. And the school board will have their regular meeting also on May 20th at 7:00 PM. On May 22nd, there is a Celebration of Service banquet. It will be held at the Florian Gardens. It begins at 5:00... At 5:00 PM with a social. And dinner and the program begin at 6:00 PM. The Memorial Graduation is at 7:00 PM at the Zorn Arena on May 30th. The North Graduation is at 7:00 PM in the North Doghouse, May 31st. And the McKinley Competency Graduation is 7:00 PM at the Long Auditorium on June 5th. So, I hope you'll be able to attend the festivities, the end-of-the-year festivities. I want to join others in wishing all of our teachers a happy Teacher Appreciation Week. It's very rare that I'm in the community, that I don't hear some type of story about the difference that our teachers are making in the lives of our students. The work is difficult. It is all-consuming. It takes a tremendous amount of dedication and commitment. And I want our teachers to know that we deeply appreciate their efforts. And this is a week when families and students will be recognizing those efforts in all of our schools. So, thank you. I have one more announcement, but I'll wait until after the consent agenda.
Thank you very much. Our next item is Board President's Report. But I don't have a report. So, go to the next one. We don't have student representatives either tonight. We have new representatives already identified, right? And they'll join us next session, in two sessions. Okay, so we'll wait until then. Is it time for board committee reports? LEAP?
We meet next Tuesday, so we haven't met since the last meeting.
Budget Committee?
Budget's in the same boat. We're... We've delayed our meeting, so haven't had one since the last.
Thank you very much. Policy and governance met this morning. We have a policy drafted for the full board consideration related to revisions of compensation. Any other reports? Legislative report. I wanted to share with you that despite the promising items that the governor's budget included, that made us think that it would be a good year, the Joint Finance Committee has decided to remove some of those or most of those items. So, if you feel so inclined to demonstrate your appreciation for teachers, then you can contact your legislator and say how much these additional funds are needed to do their work. There will be a session of the Joint Finance Committee on Thursday, this coming Thursday, where no public forum will be open, but if you attend, you can witness how they decide. So, the struggle continues, but I'll keep moving forward. The next item in the agenda is the consent resolution. The board will consider approval of the consent resolution agenda. Items that include 11.2 minutes of April 15th, 2019, 11.3 minutes of closed session of April 15th, 2019, 11.4 Human Resources Employment Report, 11.5 reemployment of certified staff for the 2019-20 school year.
Pull that, please.
Pulled it out. 11.6 Final Notice of Nonrenewal of Teachers with Limited Term Contracts, 11.7 Approval of Equity Committee on Facility Use Recommendations, 11.8 Ratification of ECASD and ECAE Master Agreement, 11.9 Approved CISA 10 Contract, 11.10 Revenue Committee Proposal Number 3, 11.11 Revisions to Policy 491, Children of Divorce, Separated Parents, and Parents Not Sharing the Same Household. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent resolution agenda.
I make a motion.
Is there a financial budget item here? No, okay. So, we can vote. Those who approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, same sign. And those who abstain. So, we have approved the consent resolution agenda. Now, we'll discuss the individually considered resolutions. 11.5 was pulled, reemployment of certified staff for the 19-20 school year.
I have no issues with it. I just have a family member who's on the list, so I'll be abstaining.
Okay. So, any other question? No? Those who... I need a motion to approve this item.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Those who approve the reemployment of certified staff for the 19-20 school year, please say aye. Those who oppose, same sign. And those who abstain?
Abstain.
Thank you very much. We have approved the reemployment of certified staff for the 19-20 school year. Dr. Hardavec has an announcement to make at this point.
So, with your approval of the Human Resources Report this week, you also approved the retirement of Patty Iverson. Patty will be retiring from the school district effective July 5th. And she has worked in the school district 34 years, with almost 33 of those years as the administrative assistant to the superintendent. During the 34 years, she worked in the district as the assistant for the Director of Pupil Services. She worked for... And I guess that would be for 32 and a half years. You worked for five superintendents, three interim superintendents. She, in her retirement letter, she put down that she had attended over 800 board meetings and worked with over 40 board members. Patty has a very close working relationship, not only with the people here at the central office, but also with people in the schools and throughout the community. And she keeps in touch with all of our former board members. So, you know, Patty, it's... There's not anybody that's going to replace you. Someone will step into your position, but no one will replace you. And we have a lot to say about you, and we will say those things as we go on over the next couple of board meetings and at the service banquet. But thank you for your service.
I'm sure that we will find plenty of opportunities to invite you to form part of many committees. Our next point in the agenda is, well, we will have committee reports, items for discussion. The Board Committee Reports. During this time, the school board allows public comment for each committee report to ask questions and/or request gratification on the topic of discussion. If you have an opposing viewpoint or wish to speak in support of an item, please sign up for the public forum section of the school board meeting at the next regular meeting. You must sign in five minutes before the school board meeting. The first report is an update on Demographic Trends and Facility Planning Committee's work group.
Phil Lyons, committee chair, is making his way up here. He and I are before you today to talk with you about the Demographic Trends Facility Planning Committee and our most recent work session, to give you an update on where things are at. You'll remember that the purpose of the Demographic Trends Facility Planning Committee is to provide at least annual recommendations to the full board regarding demographic trends, boundary issues, capacity updates, and other relevant data. And we've been before you a few times this year, and I thought as long as we had new board members or board members in new positions, it might be helpful to review where we've been at this year, where we've been this year, and what our presentations have consisted of. So I'll take some time to do that. Our discussion around the topic that we've spent the most time talking with you about this year actually began in May of last year. In May of 2018, the Demo Trends Committee shared a history of Roosevelt and the study of Roosevelt, and made a recommendation to the board that they wanted to rescind their previous recommendation, which was an expansion of that school. Over the summer of 2018, the committee outlined the cost and benefits both of the previous recommendation and of the current option. And then they came before you in October of 2018 to provide the recommendation that Roosevelt be repurposed as a 4K center and elementary boundaries be redrawn. In November of 2018, the board asked the committee to hold listening sessions to gather community feedback regarding that recommendation, as well as Roosevelt's expansion, and a third option that was proposed regarding Roosevelt. So the listening sessions were held from February to March. And in April, we reported to the board regarding the community feedback and the recommendation of the committee moving forward. Following that proposal, the board requested that a committee work group explore a fourth option that was shared with the board by a community member. And that work group met in April, and we're here tonight to share the outcome of that work group with you. And Phil is going to take it from here and share that summary.
All right. Well, good evening. If you recall at the April 15th board meeting, I shared the recommendation of the Demo and Trend Committee, and that recommendation called for the district to develop a plan to address the capacity issues at the North Side Schools by maintaining Roosevelt as an elementary school. That would include re-establishing elementary boundaries to balance enrollments, and to develop a facility plan for Roosevelt that was in the $2 to $3 million range. The plan also calls for the district to develop a separate plan for dealing with capacity issues at Prairie Ridge 4K, and develop a facility plan to address the capacity issues at the South Side Schools. That was the recommendation of the Demo Trend Committee. At that April 5th meeting, a proposal was sent to the board members by a community member, and the committee had not actually seen that proposal. So one of the purposes of getting the work group together was so that the work group could kind of digest and understand what that proposal was. So this is some of the proposal from the community member. And the board asked that a work group be established to explore this proposal. And we met on April 25th with community members, board members, two representatives from the Demo Trend Committee. And this, it's important to acknowledge that this was not a full meeting of the Demo Trend Committee. So we spent a good deal of time discussing this proposal, which I'm going to run through. This map shows the proposed elementary boundaries within the community-proposed plan. Area 1, down in the bottom left-hand corner, is currently the Lake Shore attendance area. The proposal would call for that area to become a flexible boundary between Lake Shore and Sherman. Where these students would attend would depend on the classroom capacity at Sherman and Lake Shore at the time the children enroll. There are currently 102 elementary students in that area. Area 2, up in the upper left-hand corner, is currently flexible between Roosevelt and Sherman. It would remain that way. There are approximately 30 students in that attendance area. Area 3, in between, is currently flexible between Roosevelt and Sherman, and it would change to be flexible between Roosevelt and Sam Davy. There are 34 students in that attendance area. Area 4, on the far-right side, includes a small neighborhood that currently attends Locust Lane that would move to Northwoods. That would impact six students. And finally, Area 5 moves 20 students, moves 20 students, from Longfellow to Sam Davy. So we had a lot of good conversation around this. And we were scheduled to meet at 4:30, and we were supposed to adjourn at 5:30. We spoke well past 6, almost to 6:30. And these are some of the things that we explored. The impact on families, the impact on the capacity of the schools within those boundaries, identifying the transportation needs, and the potential costs. There are some costs there. Identifying whether current anomalies in our boundaries were addressed, or if new anomalies were created. Comparing the proposal to the guiding principles of the Demo Trend Committee. And here are some of the benefits or challenges, the pro-cons, that the committee kind of teased out. The benefits including fewer families are going to be impacted, that the current families could be grandfathered into their schools. It maintains Roosevelt as a two-section school. It relieves pressure at Roosevelt and at Lake Shore. It provides 4K site at Locust Lane, and it provides that at less cost than a new facility. And it allows for flexibility when some schools reach capacity. Some of the challenges, though, is there is a lot of flexible boundaries in this plan, and that this very, has a potential to be very confusing or unpredictable for the families that are impacted. Another challenge, the additional transportation costs incurred annually at the elementary and the middle schools was estimated to be about $100,000. The limitations to flexibility beyond incoming freshman class, there's a bottleneck. Flexibility of the kindergarten class impacted by older siblings. The administrative program oversight for those three flexible boundaries is also a challenge. And anomalies in our current boundaries are not addressed, and the plan does create new ones. Some additional questions that were generated include, what is really the long-term viability of the option? Can the district commit to these additional transportation costs in the short term, or even indefinitely? Does this option assume that students in a school that's above 90% capacity or below 65% capacity, does it assume that they're not impacted? So this is important because this is one of the priorities of the Demo Trends Committee. And these are the numbers that we're trying to get at. 90% capacity, then we do something. 65% capacity, and we look at something. Are those the right numbers? If our goal is not to balance enrollment, is it necessary to move Locust or Longfellow students at all? How does this impact the importance in neighborhood schools that was shared at the listening sessions? And 4K used to be housed at elementary schools, and the question was surfaced, why was that moved? So those were some of the work group discussions that came up. as a result, the work group's recommendations taking the community proposal to the full committee for full discussion. The committee will look at both, its current recommendation before the board, as well as this community proposal, and compare the benefits and the challenges of each, as well as the estimated costs that are included. And the committee's next steps, we are going to review this community proposal. That meeting is on May 16th. I get to come back, I believe, on May 20th. So we'll present a recommendation then, a few weeks. We'll wait board approval of elementary facilities, recommendation on June 3rd, tentative timeline. Determine impact on and plan for middle school boundaries. We'll study, in the future, we'll study 4K and the elementary expansion options to make a future recommendation to the board, and we hope to wait for an appointment of board members to the committee. And so with that, we would take any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions from board members? Mr. Nordin?
I have at least one question. There might be more as we go through. One of the pros of this plan that you listed said that it relieves pressure on Roosevelt and Lake Shore. My understanding of the plan in the work group was that it doesn't actually change the number of students at either of the schools. The flexible boundaries might allow it to continue where it is, but I, am I misunderstanding? Or it doesn't actually relieve any pressure, it just allows status, like it's essentially making a no change in the amount?
That's correct. That slide that talked about the 65 and the 90%, I believe that Locust Lane, I don't have the numbers, not Locust Lane, but Roosevelt, I don't have the numbers in front of me. I believe it was at 89?
Roosevelt's over 90.
Is it over 90? All right. Well, the principal's document would call to have those numbers come down. And that gets to one of the questions of what is, what is the current capacity? What is the optimal number that we're trying to, as a Demo Trend Committee, achieve?
I do actually have a follow-up question. One other thing I wanted to ask about, I guess, was this plan seems to, like, as we just talked about, kind of says that students are not impacted at 90% or, in Locust Lane's case, under 65%. What were the issues that the Demo Trends Committee has been working to, right? Their plan definitely affects more students in terms of moving a school. But what were the, for the board members, I mean, I'm on that committee, so I think I know. But just to clarify so that we have it for the board members, what are the issues that that plan is trying to get at beyond simply moving children?
So I think that the three things that the Demo Trend Committee was trying to do, in all three, was to address the 4K issue, because there's, there is significant need in that area, and changing politics around the 4K policies. There was a need to look at the South Side Schools. And then there was a need not only to address the facility issues of Roosevelt, because the facility itself needs attention. And in the original Demo Trend recommendation, it was recommended that we put $20 million into the building. And it was in line with our principles of not renovating a two-section school, need to renovate to a three-section school. In addition, the recommendation of the Demo Trend Committee also smoothed out enrollments across all of the North Elementary Schools to bring those capacity issues much below 90%. The committee, I'm not going to cherry pick which ones are more important, but the committee took all of that into consideration when making the recommendations to the board. The facilities, the needs, and smoothing out the populations across the elementaries.
Any other question? Mr. Legumbel?
Just so I'm understanding correctly, this hasn't been vetted by the full committee. That's the intention of your next meeting.
Correct.
And at that point, they'll have to make the decision whether or not they're going to remain with the current recommendation, or if they're going to revise it in some way, and that's what's coming back on the 20th. I'm assuming for, you would want a vote at that meeting, or are you thinking a discussion at that meeting?
That would be discussion, and I believe June 3rd
Right.
is the vote.
Okay.
I just have a point of clarification, because I'm not certain how the board works. Is it necessary for the board to hold off until the June 3rd meeting? Can we not hear a recommendation and still have it? I just, you know, we have Roosevelt families, and I see the Roosevelt principle back there. We've had, you know, we're, every time we push a decision two more weeks back, it's two more weeks that those families wait to begin adjusting to whatever changes we make. So if it is possible for us to take action at the next meeting, but I'm not certain that it is, and so please forgive me if it's just my not understanding how the board has to work.
It could be either way, depending on how much information is presented to the board, and if there are no further questions.
I think Commissioner Nordin, that the, it could certainly be, whoever is in the agenda sitting could certainly place it on the next agenda as an individually considered resolution, with it first being a presentation, and then going into a discussion and possible vote. And of course, the board could opt to even still not vote, even with it being an individually resolution, but it leaves the option that if the board, through the course of its discussion, feels it's reached a conclusion, it has the ability to vote. So maybe that's the best route.
I have a logistical question. Are you planning to invite the community members to the full committee session?
Well, the meeting is open, and I think they've been at most meetings almost all year, so.
You expect they'll be there?
Apart from telling them the wrong location, I'm sure they'll be there.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for the committee from the board, or anyone from the public? Seeing none, thank you very much. We'll go to the next item in the agenda. We have an update from Indy regarding charter, school proposal, and modifications.
We have a wallet and a phone here, any takers? Okay. It's just whoever speaks up first, I think, is the rule. So my name is Anna Ribicki. I'm here from Initiative for New Directions in Education. And I apologize for my hoarseness and potential coughing, I have a very pathetic cold. We are here as a community group, so I'm representing a whole bunch of people. And I guess we just wanted, I wanted to explain first what's going on, in case anybody needs a refresher. Who am I and why am I standing here? Our group Indy started meeting back about three years ago, actually, at this point, talking about options in the public schools here in Eau Claire. And talking about options in the public schools here in Eau Claire. And those discussions came together in a proposal that we submitted in July 2017 to this district. We proposed a new public charter in Eau Claire, and at that time called it Little Red Nature Campus. In January of 2018, this body voted to denote support for us to develop the proposal on behalf of the district. And then we were, we were here a couple more times as we were scrambling to try to get a grant application together within a matter of just weeks. But have, you have not seen us since February 21st, 2018. So we thought it was high time to get back to you, and to share what we've been doing, because while we have not maybe been visible at board meetings, we've been very busy. And I will just briefly talk about some of the things we've been doing. I could talk for ten hours, twelve hours, as long as my voice would go on. Don't ask, my friends would tell you, like, don't ask me questions about Indy, because I will talk indefinitely. But I do just want to give you a few highlights over the last fourteen or fifteen months. Oh, wrong computer. A group of Indies and ECASD educators went to every teacher leader in March. The focus of that project was the charter school, and how best to recruit, serve, and retain kids with educational disadvantages. In March of 2018, we formed the Educational Advisory Group, which was a couple of dozen volunteer ECASD teachers who came to, together to help us plan the educational program. As I mentioned, we are community volunteers, most of whom don't have that expertise. So that is an amazing group of enthusiastic and outstanding educators who have been working hard. And actually, a group from that group spun off to present the ozone proposal, that I know you got written information about from me about a week and a half ago. Here's our group at a two-and-a-half-day training, and where again, the focus was the charter school proposal here in Eau Claire. Oh, there's me, standing by a sign in September at a charter conference. And here's Pizza and PBL. This is a relatively recent event we did, where about sixty-five people showed up to talk about project-based learning in our region, and to give input on some of Indy's ideas. And then actually, of course, most of the work happens when we are not taking pictures. So mostly, it's at, you know, dining room tables, and one-on-ones in coffee shops, and on the phone indefinitely with experts and that kind of thing. So just some highlights. We have researched potential locations in addition to Little Red, if that's not usable locations. So we've been touring school buildings, other kinds of buildings, walking around grounds, talking about the costs of different plans, different capacities, different building sizes, that kind of thing. We've visited several charter schools, and seen them in action, and talked to their leaders, and talked to their students. We've been both here in Wisconsin and out of state as well, doing that. We've held more one-on-ones than we can count with teachers, and administrators, and families, and all kinds of community leaders to get their input on the project. Of course, we are meeting monthly, and also with our small teams. So like, we have the Indy Core Team. Erica Zer sitting here is our core team coordinator. I am our Eau Claire Charter Team Coordinator, so we have sort of, it's sort of like a committee structure, but we call it teams. We've communicated with families inquiring how to enroll in the school. We've attended two-day educational sort of innovation conference, both this year and last year. There is also School Development Day that was added this year that was really helpful, specifically for charter schools developing, so we were able to attend that. And then there's also this other day that we attended in September. So all of that work and all of those conversations have changed the proposal since we first submitted it. And when I look back, I'm still very proud of what we wrote you back in 2017. But we have had so much more input from our community since then, including the folks around this table. We have, we've taken all that in, you know, especially those questions and concerns we've gotten here, and ones we've gotten from our local educators. And, and so we have rebranded the project, the Land School, for both LAND, in its normal sense, and also as an acronym for Liberal Arts, Nature, and Design Thinking. So when a week and a half of, a half ago, I sent you a fifty-eight-page document, and apologies for that. It was mostly appendices, okay, guys? Like, most of it was not new information, but some of it was. So there was a summary of why we transitioned from LRNC to LAND. There was a narrative portion, maybe fifteen or twenty pages, about how the school could improve equity in the district, and how it could serve special populations, how we could best recruit a diverse set of learners, and how we could use research-based PBL practices to improve student achievement here in Eau Claire. And then, so these are some of the appendices I was referring to. We actually also just resubmitted our original proposal, so you could compare it if you wanted, and the ozone proposal as well, because we would love to see that come to fruition and be part of the big picture. We also, with, again, apologies for the many details, submitted a five-year expense and revenue estimate. So we're talking line by line for this potential school, as well as we could get it. And we understand that's really a beginning of a conversation with you and not the end. But we wanted to do as much of that work as we could on your behalf. And we also submitted several letters of support from community leaders for the Land School. So I know you all received it. For others, it's up on board docs, and it's also on our website, so I've put it there in case anyone like me is an enthusiast and wants to read fifty-eight pages of charter school information. So this is the exciting part, guys. So I only have a short time with you tonight, but I'm going to use five minutes of it on a world premiere video, because I really thought that you deserved to hear from more voices than just mine. As I've tried to show, this has been a huge team effort, and we're very proud of all the people who have been involved. And so to explain the Land School and talk a little bit about project-based learning, we have a movie. And hopefully it works. I'm just going to make it big.
The Land School will be a project-based learning school that brings together liberal arts, nature, and design thinking. Liberal arts include mathematics, the humanities, social sciences, and physical sciences. Nature. Students will spend time outdoors, growing into environmental stewards and good global citizens. Design thinking transforms students into creative problem solvers who have the agency to build a more equitable world.
Project-based learning, or PBL, is a design-thinking approach to teaching in which the teachers act more like guides, and students are empowered to make their own choices about learning. PBL provides opportunities for students to develop 21st-century skills like critical thinking, collaboration, creative problem solving, and communication. Students gain knowledge and skills by working on authentic driving questions for extended periods of time. The learning is multidisciplinary, it's very hands-on, it's very real-world.
Project-based learning just opens up so many different avenues for students and educators. There's so much choice and opportunities for real-world connections, and finding ways to combine learning from all different content areas in different contexts.
So what I like about project-based learning is that you learn a lot more about yourself, like, how well do I work when I'm working by myself? Is it easy for me to meet my deadlines? What do I need to get done? Or is it easier for me to work with a group where we split up the work, and, you know, we're all encouraging each other?
I like project-based learning because I get to be independent.
Project-based learning has been so helpful to me, overcome my struggles of dyslexia.
Project-based learning helped me get who I, get to where I am right now, from being a good student to having great ideas and a creative mindset.
I like project-based learning because you get to do everything independently, you can, you have many different creative ways of doing things.
I like project-based learning better than any other thing, because then you get to actually do stuff that you like and learn about projects the way you like. So, because everybody likes to learn differently, and with project-based learning, you can learn how you like to learn.
I like project-based learning because it allows me to make great friends, but still work at my own pace.
I like project-based learning because it's an independent way to have fun.
I like project-based learning because it allows you to make your dreams come true with your projects and your ideas.
I believe that project-based learning is beneficial for kids, because as they walk through a project-based learning process, they learn just as much about themselves as they do about the content. It allows them to work with others and be a good collaborator, work on managing their time, work on organizing and collecting information, and then applying it to different situations. Project-based learning offers a great deal of growth and essential skills, and prepares students not only for their future as students, but future as adults as well.
We do have a problem of student anxiety and student depression. Having a school that really gives students the agency to control how they learn really makes it so that they are less anxious and less depressed. Once we start building schools that really center around student need, that uses project-based learning, and then tries to use teacher relationships with students to drive the curriculum, I think then we can really change things for the future.
The Land School will equip students to fearlessly face an uncertain future with a designer's mindset, and give them the tools they need to create positive change in the world.
I think the Eau Claire Area School District has done a nice job providing options at the elementary and middle school levels, and it's time to extend those opportunities to our high school-age youth. Today's youth will be living in a future where they'll experience technology and social structures that don't exist yet. We need to prepare them with the skills to address new challenges as they emerge. I support the Land School initiative, because I believe it will engage our high school-age youth in highly relevant, real-world learning that will prepare them to live and lead in that future.
All kids are different.
All kids are different.
All kids are different.
Not all schools have to be the same.
Not all schools have to be the same.
Not all schools have to be the same.
Will you help us build the Land School?
Will you help us build the Land School?
Will you help us build the Land School?
The Land School will be a new public school choice for Eau Claire. Not all kids are the same, and not all schools need to be the same. Will you help us build the Land School?
And, and you see there's some thanks in there. The person who did not get thanked is the actual filmmaker. Johnny Wheeler made that film with us, and so he didn't give himself credit, but, but he, he did that since we found out we were on the agenda. So he put in a ton of work very recently on that. So thank you to Johnny for his skills and his dedication. So, just again to remind you, there is startup grant money for Wisconsin Public Charter Schools right now, for the kind of school we're talking about. So a secondary school at this size, it's up to eight hundred thousand dollars to get started. There are five grant cycles, it's annual, and the money is first come, first served. So there is no guarantee it's going to be around. And we have missed the first two grant cycles. So we would very much like to take advantage of this grant and build this school, and that means hopefully hopping on that next cycle, which is in February 2020. And we believe that's very doable here in the district, and have a suggestion for how to get there from where we are here. So this is a proposed timeline. Again, this is up for discussion. But what we would suggest is that at your next meeting, that you would approve a working group, and that working group would take on the question of location over the summer. You've noticed with our rebranding, we've taken out that location from, from the, from the title. And we really believe that this program could live and succeed lots of different places. And so we are open to and are really interested in finding what the best home for it is here in the district. So whether that's a district building, or a rented space, or, you know, Little Red, who knows? But I think to really answer a lot of the budgetary questions that I know we have, that we're going to need to lock down some location ideas and bring some options. And, and in order to do that, we need expertise that we don't have as community volunteers. We just need information from the district that we don't have access to right now. So what we suggest is, is a working group. Again, up for discussion, but this is a suggested staffing to bring some different perspectives and expertise onto the group. And then all we're asking for at this point is what I've highlighted here, so that this board would approve really just the next step in the timeline, the formation of that group and the research about locations. And I think this is a very low-risk proposition. It would mean some staff time over the next three months. I don't think it would be a lot of staff time. I don't think it would be, I can't think of money that would actually need to be spent, any new money need to be spent. And what I've done here is, I've asterisked, if that is in fact a verb, all the places where the board can go ahead and decline to pursue the idea. So we have this sort of general approval from you, from back in January of 2018. But if you decide you don't like the idea, next meeting, you could let us know that, and we would be done. Alternatively, and hopefully, you would approve this working group, and the working group would come back to you at the end of the summer with these location and options with their associated budgetary impacts. And then again, another asterisk, you could say no thanks, or you could approve grant writing that fall. That could be done by the working group, or it could be done by some other constituted group that was, that was especially for grant writing. I think that we have a lot of the grant writing done. Frankly, I've read a lot of the grants, I was a grant reviewer, and I've also looked at other people's grants quite a bit, and I think what we have is already pretty strong. So I think we have plenty of time over the fall to use that location information, and to really tailor it to something that, again, with more people involved, is really right for the district. And then the goal would be to then get that draft approved for submission prior to February. And then people are finding out around June-ish, at least so far, about the grants. It does pay for a paid planning year, so I've gone ahead and just plugged that in where that would be. That would start in September 2020. So you can actually hire a school, you know, a lead teacher, school planner person who can have all salary and benefits paid for that year, and then implementation would be 2021. Wrong computer again. So that's what we're asking for tonight. And with that, I would be happy to take any questions you have.
Thank you. Any questions from board members? Mr. Harder.
Thanks for the presentation, and that video is great. So I'm just trying to understand the approve next steps on timeline slide. So we're looking at the asterisks, which are sort of exit points for
Yes, elegant exit points.
Elegant exit points for the board. We have one sort of this month.
Right away, yes.
Right away, which could be in the form of a no thank you.
Exactly.
As you said, or September 9th, which after some, we go, we say, let's go ahead and spend some time researching these location options, fleshing out some of the information that you've already developed over the last year, and then convene again in September, where we would have the chance again to say, great, carry on, or no thank you.
Yes. And then again, you'll see another asterisk there, that if the grant was not awarded, that would be, that would be another time that the district could say, thanks, but no thanks, we were on board, but without the eight hundred thousand startup, then we're not on board anymore, and that is acceptable in terms of the grant application.
I'm wondering about the grant itself. Do we know of the grants that have been awarded up until now? Are they awarding people what their total proposal is? Or are they paring it down? Or what, what are we seeing from these districts that have received grants in the first two cycles?
I don't know that I could speak very generally on that. I mean, we have had the chance to talk with some of the teams, and it seems, I had the impression they were getting their asks. And you'll see that actually, in the Excel spreadsheet that we prepared, there's actually some grant money to burn on this. So in fact, we've had some teams tell us, yeah, we had, we had more than we needed in certain categories, because they are quite generous startup grants. But I would, I would need to survey a bunch of people to get you a really good answer on that, but I have not seen people getting, you know, saying, okay, on that, but I have not seen people getting, you know, saying, coming back and saying, oh, we got half or anything like that. It seems like they're just getting funded. And I know, you know, with my experience being a reviewer, there's, you know, significant money to go out, and so I think they're, they're looking for people to be successful.
Dr. Bicka.
I served as a reviewer in this year's granting cycle, and at no point in the process, during our training, during their views, was it ever indicated that, you know, they were attempting to kind of compartmentalize the proposals?
I have a question for LEAP Committee. Has this, this is a different proposal than what we received last time, right?
It's an updated proposal. It's, I mean, it's the same educational program. We've rebranded it to sort of take that location piece out, and we've, we've changed the grade levels, and that would be the only change. We've done that in response to feedback we've gotten from this board as well as other places. So, you know, my position would be it's a, it's an updated and improved, but not a new proposal. You may not have been asking me, so sorry.
Thank you. I think it's a new proposal. Has it been reviewed by the LEAP Committee?
It has not, and one of the things if you'll notice is the new proposal also intertwines with ozone, and that has also not been in front of, in front of the LEAP Committee.
Mr. Nordean, Dr. Nordean.
Thank you, Anna, for the presentation, and I also would echo that it's a pretty good movie.
I'll tell Johnny, he couldn't be here.
I appreciate what they're doing. I realize that the LEAP Committee hasn't necessarily seen or vetted this full proposal. Having worked closely on both versions, I guess I would stand by Mr. Bicki's assessment that it's really just an update, it's moving the grades up. And I also am not certain that it's fully intertwined with the ozone's proposal. The idea of the ozone's proposal is, you know, it's maybe in response to that possibility, but it's, neither of them are dependent on one another. They're independent ideas that we can evaluate separately. And I also just wanted to say I appreciate the, the small steps that you've given here, and it seems like it's relatively easy next step for the board to decide whether we think this is a good idea for the district, and if we like this idea, if we think it might be right for Eau Claire, then we can say that at the next one, and if we don't, we can say that as well and, you know, let Indy do with that idea what they will. I, like Mr. Novak, am filled with great joy when I think about a school like this. This is the kind of school that excited me as a teacher, it sent me back to school. But it may not be right for Eau Claire in principle, and even if it is right for Eau Claire in principle, we will see in the early fall, is it right for us financially? We know that we have a struggle, and I've been upfront with Anna and the rest of Indy that I, you know, I'm skeptical about how much risk we can take on that. But we need, I think they need extra help to really solidify those numbers and present us with that information, but we can give them three months to do that. So I think this is a reasonable next step, and I, I would be happy to take this up at the next meeting.
Yeah, I, with the timeline, obviously the ask is that we would approve a working group in May. They would bring something to us July. So I guess, you know, perhaps one of the challenges we had the last time that we made that, basically the same kind of motion to assess feasibility and look into things on the part of staff, working with people from your organization and others, I think there was a lot of ambiguity. So I guess from your perspective, from that May to July period, who would, what, what facets of the district would you anticipate working with? What, what kind of partnership or workings with LEAP would you anticipate during that period? And kind of how many hours per week were you, are you thinking?
No, that's a great...
Just wondering if you can kind of go into that a little bit.
Yeah, so, and just one small correction. The, the July date is not highlighted because it's optional. I just noted that you all do have a meeting then, so if there's something additional you wanted from the group, it could be July. The work would actually happen between May 20th and August 19th, so it is three months. Just anyway, I don't know that it actually affects your question. So as I mentioned, this is sort of a starting suggestion of who might compose that working group. Obviously, the Indy members, because we have the background in the proposal, perhaps a board member if someone was so inclined. We really thought having both a teacher and a principal would be excellent, and we suggested maybe a representative from teaching and learning and a representative from the business office. And the reasons that we've done that is, as I mentioned, we've been doing lots of things over the last several months, and we've found where we hit a stopping point and where we really can't go any further as community volunteers without further information. For instance, putting that five-year budget together was very challenging as a community volunteer, I can tell you, because the dining room table I mentioned was mine, and I was sitting at it with a spreadsheet for weeks and weeks, and I have no expertise to do that. So we gave it our best shot. I mean, we did run it by people who do have the expertise, and Paul Tweet at Wildlands looked at it and said, yeah, you're on the right track, this looks good, and, you know, that type of thing. So that was good, but that process would have been so much easier if we would have just had access to some information from district staff, and we weren't able to have that at this point. And so that's the business office part. The teaching and learning part, again, I just think that's such an important part of our district, I want to make sure that we fit into the big picture of TNL. So those are the folks I was imagining might be meeting, say, you know, four to six times, maybe over those months. Maybe we're meeting an hour each time, but maybe some people are doing some things in between. I really think if we had, you know, 10 hours of staff time over the whole summer from the business office, I think it would be plenty, because I'll tell you, I've been doing it as, as an amateur, and I've been getting a lot of the answers. So I think if we had someone who, you know, had that expertise, it would go much, much more quickly. Now, will that take a call to student transit? Yeah, probably, but we just did that. We just talked about school-wide busing and adding a route, so, you know, I've made a guess based on that. So I think there would, there will be some phone calls and emails in between, but I, I really don't think this is going to be a heavy lift for staff. And I think it's plenty of time. When we were before you before, it was such a rushed job. I think it was very stressful for everyone involved, and it wasn't anybody's fault, it was just that the grant came out late January, and it was due early March, and it left almost no time. And so I think that, that what we're asking now is much less than what we were asking then, and it's over a longer period of time. So we're hoping that it's doable.
Commissioner Kinkheimer.
So a couple of things, and this might be a good point, Dr. Nordean, as a new board member, to, to talk about conflict of interest. And the fact that you sit on this board and probably really shouldn't be part of the discussion, I think you need to choose one or the other. So I think we need to talk about a conflict of interest, and Erin, I know this has always been something you and I have talked about too, since your spouse is, is involved in this project, so I think we need to be aware of that. The second sort of issue that we need to maybe think about is, we've spent a lot of time over the past year with LEAP, developing a procedure and a path for proposals that come through that process and make it successfully vetted through the LEAP Committee to then receive the support from the district that's being asked for. And so having read through this proposal, I do believe it's significantly different that it, that we should consider sending it back through the LEAP process. We're talking about different grade levels, we've no longer got the Little Red Nature Campus, we're trying to embed this into high schools. How is it being affected by what we decide to do at, at the middle school level? I think there's a lot of questions to jump over all of the policy that we've just tried to put in place. And so I think that, I mean, we have to start asking the question, why are we spending all this time doing policy if we're just going to push programs over the top of it? So it would be my preference to send them back through LEAP, at least for an initial, an initial meeting before we're jumping ahead and assuming, because the LEAP Committee has developed a way to get them this, this support that they're, that they're really looking for. It's, we're hopefully one meeting away from, from having our policy established. So that would be my, my thoughts on it.
Dr. Nordean.
I'm glad you brought up conflict of interest, so that I can state that there isn't any. I don't get paid for the work that I have done with Indy. I won't be paid for the work that I have done with Indy, because nobody gets paid for Indy. There's no financial conflict of interest. I'm simply working on a project that I believe in, much in the same way that Dr. Torres worked with this dual-language immersion to help that come to fruition, and Commissioner Luganville worked with the virtual school to help those ideas come forward. So thank you for letting me clear that up as we go forward. I did a bunch of volunteer work on a project that I care about, and I'll never see a dime for it. I just care about this project. So thank you. I have been involved, my name's actually on the 58-page paper, because I authored some of it, and I'm proud of that work. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Harder.
I guess I was mentioned, so I'd just like to also speak up, and my wife is here, and her pictures were, you know, on the slide. We talked to legal counsel early on in this process, and the same conclusion was very clear.
Could I respond to the LEAP portion unless, is there more, if unless it's not time yet?
I would just like to clarify, for the dual-immersion program, I was designated by the board to be, to serve in that committee, I didn't volunteer. Yes, Mr. Bicki.
Thank you, okay. So, so on the question of the process and on the LEAP process, I'm very grateful for all the work LEAP has been doing. I know it's been a lot, and it's not been an easy road to go through that organization and be working on the process for the innovation zones, and I'm very hopeful it will be quite improved. So I think it's, it's good stuff. Our, our group was launched by LEAP. I mean, they, they approved us for step one in July of 2017, and they approved us for step two in November of 2017. And since then, we have not gotten any assistance to speak of from that committee, because the committee has been involved in other things. And again, it's been important work, and I see why it happened that way, but what the committee decided to take up was a policy on innovation zones, which of course we aren't eligible to bring forward. So, you know, my belief is that there is a charter school policy, it's a board policy, it's 3-3-1, and we belong at the board level at this point, because that's really what's needed for this project. We have worked with, we've worked with LEAP, and we've gotten the assistance we can gain there, and it's not a group that right now has the capacity, I think, to, to continue, you know, bringing this project to the next level. So the request is for a working group of the board.
Any other questions from the public? Or Mr. Commissioner Luganville?
Yeah, I, I just am wondering, logistically, when is the next meeting of LEAP, or is it not scheduled?
I think it's next Tuesday.
Okay. Is it possible for this to be a primary topic on their agenda to discuss, and we can have a report out at the next meeting, May 20th, or would that not work? I just, I don't know what, what's on your agenda, so.
Yeah, the, the, the primary thing on our agenda is to get the policy approved, and I believe we are pretty much there. We, if I recall, we received changes from policy and governance, we had that conversation, but I think we had to take it back to have our committee, am I remembering that right, Kim? So the only other thing that we have then is ozone, which has been waiting patiently to get in front of LEAP and has been pushed back at least two, three times now. And so to skip over them again, I, I think would be doing them a greater disservice. So that, those two items were, will pretty much take up all of our time at that meeting.
And Commissioner, if I could ask a question, just a clarifying question there, when you say the policy was in policy and governance and is coming back, that's the LEAP innovation zone policy, so it's not a charter policy?
That's correct.
Okay. And, and that has not been created yet, is that right?
It's next on our to-do list.
Oh, good.
Dr. Bicka.
That's much a question, but I, I also would like to see this proposal go through the LEAP Committee's process, I think both in terms of, it's, it's been a very long time, the proposal has changed, it's qualitatively different proposal than what we saw those years ago. And LEAP is a different committee now. The policies have changed, and so I, just in general, would like to see any proposal vetted through committee first, not come straight to the board, just as a general practice.
And I, and again, I would just argue this policy has very much been through committee, it's been sitting there since July of 2017, and the committee was very helpful early on, but they do not have a charter process or process or policy. There is a board policy on charters, and I believe that's what governs right now.
Yeah, just, and LEAP did review this, that's why we're seeing this. It was, at the last LEAP meeting, this was an agenda item. I would characterize the LEAP Committee's response to this proposal as very enthusiastic and really wanting to see this before the board at this time, given the length of time that it sat and the amount of work that's been done.
Commissioner Kinkheimer.
But to be clear, the LEAP Committee did not review any of this. What the LEAP Committee voted was that Indy could bring this information to the board. They didn't vote to support or not support it, they didn't hear it. So the LEAP Committee really hasn't looked at this as a committee.
Yeah, and I, and I would, I would, I guess my position would be somewhere in between, that we did provide a summary of the changes to the proposal to the committee, I believe we, you know, we submitted that in writing. Yeah, yeah, and I agree, it's not, it's not the 58 pages, because all we were asking was, may we go to the board, and got that approval. So I don't think, so at least the committee is aware of the rebranding and did send us to the board with that information.
Chris Humble.
Hi, my name is Chris Humble, I live at 1822 Crest Hugue in Eau Claire. I didn't intend to speak this evening, but feel compelled to because of the time, the amount of time that this initiative has kind of sat out there, and we've already okayed through the board two other charters ahead, even though they probably presented prior to that. And I guess the information as a community member now that I would seek would be the number of students in the Eau Claire area school district right now that attend Wildlands, and what does that take from our school district. I also would like to know that the prospects for the plan, if it doesn't go through, what will we lose budget-wise, given students that might, and families that might like that model of education for their children? We haven't really gotten into what that impact would be, but given our budget, given the fact that our virtual charter school was looked at as far as maybe helping with our budget, I do think this is the same kind of initiative. So I just wanted to throw that out there so that you have that information in front of you too as you make your decision. Thank you.
I think we have a procedural situation here where we're in a, in a process of redefining and restructuring LEAP as a committee, and we have invested a good amount of time and effort to do so, and we are at porters of bringing up to, bringing it to fruition. I would really, I would have really preferred to have... I would really, I would have really preferred to have an opinion of the committee before it came to the board because we have not had a conversation about creating a charter school in, at the secondary level. That's a completely different conversation than the one we sort of had a few months ago. I think it would be wise to send it back to the committee for their consideration and opinion and then we can have the conversation. Provided, or, you know, thinking also that the other project, the ozone project, which has a very catchy name and sounds interesting, even that will need to be aligned to the model that we are creating. So I think we just need to go back to the drawing board.
Well, if I might respond without cutting you off too terribly there. You know, this board has approved a virtual school quite recently. That was a charter school that did not go through LEAP, that was not in development for the last two years. And I, I guess I would just ask that, that you consider, you know, that that board goal of strengthening connections with the community, that that's, that's us. We're part of that community and we've put in thousands of hours of our own time because we believe in this project. And I'm not asking anyone to feel bad for us that we've done that. We've done that as enthusiastic volunteers who believe in this project. But we came to you almost two years ago with this project and we've kept our enthusiasm up and we've been working our tails off. And we come back to you and we do our best to answer the questions again and again. And we've been waiting on LEAP since November 2017. And the policy they decided to take up was the innovation zone policy, which is a good project, but they have not begun work, to my understanding, on a charter policy. So we've been waiting on that committee for a year and a half. And I think that this board should be realistic about what it can ask of its community volunteers. So I'm presenting a way I believe this project could move forward to keep that enthusiasm going. And so that's our request is the working group and the timeline we presented.
Mr. Luganville?
Yeah, I, I'll just kind of state my opinion. I think it makes sense to place it on an upcoming agenda to vote as far as where we would like to send it. And we as a board will, can take that vote and decide what we would, what we wish to do with it, whether that is move forward with forming a working group, directing it to a committee. We can make that decision as a board. And then this, this group has a, has a directive from our board. They know where they stand and it's not, it's not floating out there. So I think that makes perfect sense to put it our next meeting for the board to consider and vote on the future of this, wherever that future may lie. The one other thing I'll say is just for board members who might be interested as far as the conflict of interest statutes are interesting and they do go beyond financial. And I would encourage all board members, not just with this proposal, but just to review, and it's 19.591(c) in state statute. And just check that out. I think that it will just help make sure that we're following it always, not necessarily with this proposal, but with others that may come before us. Because it goes more into association with an organization of which you're affiliated, not necessarily. The earlier parts of the statute go into financial benefits and later on it goes more into organizational connection. So I know I've had to be cognizant of that a few votes on the board and it's important for everyone to be cognizant of that.
Thank you. Any other comment? Dr. Vika?
From having just reviewed the charter school grants, one conflict of interest to consider if current board members or partners or spouses of board members are founding members and children then have priority in the school. That would be, I'm just, as a, something to think about. I'd like to know, if we are to take a group, I'd like to know if current board member, not tonight, the next time, are considered founding members.
And Dr. Vika, I think I can actually answer that because we've considered that in our group. And anybody in that position has said they would not use that priority. So I don't think that's a, that particular situation's an issue.
We have amongst your requirements, Ms. Ribicke, you are also asking for staff time, right?
Let's call it.
At this point, we cannot warranty that. We'll need to see what's the availability. So that will give us time, we will need time to find out. So if we include that in the, in the agenda for our next session, then we can have a fuller, more complete idea of what the real possibilities are.
Thank you.
Any commentaries? Thank you. Our next point in the agenda is discussion regarding board governance, structure, timelines, and sessions. And I think we have, oh, Joel, that's your turn.
It's just me. So this is a very brief presentation, but as promised, from the work session that we had, the self-evaluation work session, that I would follow up with kind of an overview of a sample process and timeline that we can follow as a board. Obviously, any of this can be modified, but these are my suggestions and certainly open to any input that you have. So we've obviously talked quite a bit about a governance structure. I think this, you all hopefully have the slides on your laptop because the screen thing is acting funny. There we go. Governance structures are really to empower us to the best of our ability to fulfill our various obligations set by state statute and local policy regarding governance. And it allows us to, I kind of made it really simple in the second section, focus on the issues we need to focus to, delegate with clarity, direct administration's functions without micromanaging, rigorously assess and evaluate the accomplishment of the organization, and to lead, truly lead the organization. So we have really talked about three major options that the board could consider as far as a governance model. There are others out there. These are the three that have been discussed either at trainings board members have attended or through books or periodicals that board members have gotten a hold of. So the first is coherent governance, which we had a few board members, it was two years ago, who read this book here, which is Boards That Matter by Lynda Dawson and Randy Quinn. And it goes into the building blocks that establish not only, so coherent governance, but also policy governance, which are affiliated, closely affiliated, and they're basically depending on what a district, what a board feels would, would best fit their organization. And both of those are products of the Aspen Group, which thousands of school districts across the country are utilizing this framework. A local, oh, if you could go back, Secretary Iverson, I'm sorry. Just, we're over now. That's off hook. Yeah, you'll see. So, so basically, the, in the middle here, key work of school boards. I put that on the list because I think it's still important for the board to discuss it in the context of choosing a governance structure because it is the most recent governance structure that we have selected as a board. None of us were here, I believe, except for Commissioner Vu, who was on the board at that time, when the board previously affirmed key work of school boards in 2014. Key work of school boards is a product of the National Association of School Boards and the vast majority of state affiliate organizations have adopted it as well and provide, through the state organizations, they provide trainings for school boards as far as how to implement that governance structure. So I have on that slide, and it's fine to stay on this one now, but I have on that slide that it was previously affirmed, and I use that word loosely, because it was never put in a policy. It was affirmed by the board at that time, but it was never put in policy. And there was never a, institutionally as a board, a mechanism put in place to follow up on it and assess how we were maintaining fidelity to it. So we, we adopted it at that time, the board adopted it at that time and moved forward with trainings on it, but obviously all but one of the board members who were there for those trainings is gone now. So it left with board members as they left. But we have this booklet as well, we as a district have the most recent guidebook for key works. So my suggested next steps, which we can obviously modify as we'd like to, would be that, that is, this is assuming first and foremost that those three governance structures seem to be the prevalent structures that we're interested in looking at, that we would review the literature regarding those two options. For some of us, it will be rereading them and for some of us, it will be the first time. Boards That Matter and Key Work of School Boards. Boards That Matter is a double whammy because it includes the coherent governance and policy governance in separate sections. It shows exactly how it's implemented, everything from how you set an agenda as a board, how emails. It covers everything for cohesive governance of a school board and its individual members. So that would be my first suggestion is that we would review that literature and set a due date to finish our homework on reading those pieces, those documents. Then I would suggest that we hold one to two work sessions just regarding, just us as a board, regarding those various models, discussing the benefits and drawbacks that we see, not just as a board, but hopefully the members of the executive team would be there. And then that gives us the opportunity also to, in the course of that discussion, identify what questions we have about these models in practice. And then that would take us to the, to the third piece, which is scheduling a presentation and Q&amp;A time with successful board practitioners who've used these various models. So one example is, you know, the La Crosse area school district who's, you know, really implemented a lot, that's in Boards That Matter. Varoukla school district is one example. They have implemented key work to fidelity and they are available through the state association as a presenting board. So both of those are sample boards that we know are available to speak to us. So that would be my next suggestion. And then, of course, once that's finished, it's, it's go time to formally approve the adoption of a governance model. And then more importantly, get it cemented in our policies and our handbook as a board so that we will maintain fidelity to it moving forward. And then I would suggest that we have a group put together of interested board members and executive team members, the superintendent, to really look at, not only just in our policies and handbook, but in our day-to-day workings on committees and the other things that we do as board and an executive team, how do we fully implement the structure that we choose and make sure that we're following it as best we can? So that is all I have. I put a picture of Mr. Rogers because who doesn't like to look at his smiling face? So, but if anyone has questions or discussion, and that's, those are my suggestions for our board though, as far as next steps. And I think this summer, you know, moving into the next couple of meetings to review it and then have those sessions this summer, I think it would be a really good time to do that. The other reason why I think it's a good time to do that is because obviously we'll soon begin the process of identifying a search firm, identifying that process for our system moving into the fall, and having a governance structure in place before a new superintendent is selected, and having actual time as a board and executive team to work through that structure before someone comes in, I think will be very valuable also. So that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Luganville, for the initiative. Do we have an idea of, in the ballpark, when would this take place? Not just the summer, but more precise dates?
Well, I would suggest that if, if board members are okay with it, we would have at our July meeting, we could have a work session at length about the, about the governance structures. So that gives us the rest of this month and June to look at these documents. And obviously, you don't need to read it front to back, but, you know, skimming through it, reviewing it, looking at different sections, taking notes as you see them, but then having in July those work sessions and then as, as a board, and then looking at probably August, that we would look to schedule, because it's really a downtime for a lot of people, look to schedule the, the time for the various board representatives to come. I know, for example, the La Crosse school board president, I reached out to her just to confirm that she, she's the new school board president. So I said, we would be throwing you into the, you know, lines and if we asked you to come, and she said she'd be happy to. So doing that in, in August.
Thanks. A question would be for board members, would that timing be convenient? Because I know that some of you take long trips in the summer. I am one of those. Yes, you too. So how about we send Commissioner, Commissioner Luganville, we send him our availability during the summertime so he can draft a schedule so that we plan our summertime and move ahead with due diligence? And we know that we have the books and the readings. Perhaps Dr. Nordean will need a copy of the additional. You have it? Okay. So now you need to read it. And we can move forward. I think it's a, it's a good idea. Thank you very much. Our next point in the agenda is discussion and possible first reading of policy 447, Student Discipline and Positive Behavior Interventions. This policy comes from P and G and has indicated in red the modifications, right?
It's one sentence.
It's just one sentence and one subtitle. I'll just go ahead and read it. The first subtitle included is expulsion procedures. After the paragraph that begins, "In any referred student and his/her parent, guardian shall be provided with a written notice of their local, state, and federal rights and responsibilities." Then moving forward, a title that ECASD follows the current state guidelines for appeals of student expulsions. And that's all that is new. The rest remains the same. Any questions or commentaries? Here none, we'll include this item for the second reading next session?
Just approval.
For approval, okay, thank you. The next point in the item in the agenda is discussion and possible first reading of new policy 886, District and Tribal Communication and Collaboration. Would you mind, Commissioner Luganville?
This is a new policy. The Eau Claire area school district welcomes and gives due consideration to recommendations received from tribal officials and from the parent and guardians of children from tribal backgrounds regarding, one, district and tribal communication and collaboration, two, the issues and needs of children from tribal backgrounds, and three, how the district may help children from tribal backgrounds better realize the benefits of the district's educational programs and activities. It is the policy of the school district that children from tribal backgrounds shall have the opportunity to participate on an equal basis with all other district students in education programs and activities. The district shall meaningfully collaborate with tribal nations serving district students in a timely, active, and ongoing manner in the development of a comprehensive program and in the actions taken as a result of such collaboration. The director of student services shall have primary administrative oversight regarding the development, application, and implementation of any program carried out under a federal formula grant, including ensuring that the required community involvement activities take place.
Any questions about the proposed policy? If none, then I would like to take the opportunity to remind us all that we are in the, we are on the ancestral lands of the Ojibwa and Lakota nations and it's our responsibility to on the ancestral lands of the Ojibwa and Lakota nations, and it's our responsibility to protect their interests and affirm their identities. Let's move to the next item. This will be included in the next agenda for approval. The next item is discussion and possible first reading of Policy 443.5, Student Use of Electronic Devices.
Can we get a clarification, Secretary Everson, on which parts of this are new? The whole thing? Okay.
So let's take turns to read by paragraphs, and I'll invite our newest member, Dr. Nordean, to get started. And then we'll go from left to the left.
This policy is intended to apply to students when they are at school, participating in any school-sponsored activity, and at all other times when the student is subject to the authority and supervision of district officials. At such times and under the conditions established in this policy, students may possess an electronic communication device, such as a cellular telephone or other personal electronic device with communications functions or with recording, photographic, or video imaging capabilities. Students may use such devices only with school permission that has been granted pursuant to this policy.
Dr. Vika?
Building principals are authorized to establish school rules and acceptable use guidelines for students limited in non-disruptive use of electronic devices for educational, safety, medical, vocational, or other legitimate reasons. The rules shall permit students at all grade levels to use a personal electronic device as needed, for example, to contact a responsible adult in any emergency situation that involves an immediate threat to the health, safety, or property of any person. However, when carrying out school emergency response plans, an administrator or other staff member may direct students to turn off their personal electronic devices so that emergency communication networks are not overwhelmed and so that emergency response efforts are not jeopardized.
Commissioner Vu?
I'm looking for the place where we stopped.
Number one.
Students shall not use electronic communication device to engage in bullying or harassment, to communicate test answers, photograph tests, or engage in any other conduct that constitutes or facilitates academic dishonesty, to take, disseminate, transfer, or share any image, recordings, or other content that is absent, lewd, illegal, sexually explicit, or otherwise inappropriate for the school setting, in areas where other people have a reasonable expectation of privacy, including all locker rooms, bathrooms, or other changing areas, except in an emergency, to create, communicate, share, or post recordings or image of any other student or staff member without permission from that student or staff member, except in an emergency, in violation of the district's rules surrounding students' acceptance or use of technology. Possession and use of an electronic communication device by a student under this policy is a privilege. A student who chooses to exercise this privilege does not, thus so subject to the following conditions: the rapid expansion of communication technologies, the increasing prevalence of multifunction devices, and the extent to which numerous electronic devices are now internet-enabled. Lead the board to conclude that the regulation of electronic communication devices has become merged with a broader topic of acceptable use of technology within the school setting. Accordingly, the board delegates the administration the authority to develop, implement, enforce, and revise as necessary rules that govern students' acceptable use of technology in a manner that incorporates specific expectations related to students' possession and use of communication devices and other personal electronic devices.
Joe?
The district, are you stopping halfway through?
Are you?
Oh, nice of you. The district is not responsible for the safety or security of personal electronic equipment that students possess or use at school or at a school-related activity. Students who possess or use such devices do so at their own risk with regard to possible theft, damage, misappropriation of data, or equipment, or other loss. If a district official has reason to suspect or determines that a student has possessed or used an electronic device in violation of the law, this policy or a school rule or directive, a district official may temporarily confiscate the device and/or turn the device over to law enforcement. A device possessed or used by a student may be subject to an appropriately limited search by a district official, the school resource officer, or other designee of the district official, when the official has reason to suspect that such a search may lead to evidence of a crime or a violation of board policy or school rules. The scope of any such search will be limited to the suspected violation. Three, to the extent allowed by law, school employees may request a student to disclose the access information for any of the student's personal internet accounts, including those that may be accessible through a student's personal electronic communication device prior to law enforcement intervention. If the district determines that a student has possessed or used such a device in violation of the law, this policy or a school rule or derivative, the student is subject to appropriate school-imposed consequences, such as the possible loss of privileges, suspension, and/or expulsion. The district may also refer certain matters to law enforcement. You want to do the last one?
I was gonna just read.
I'll give you the last sentence. Neither this policy, neither this policy nor any school rules shall be construed to limit a student's ability to possess and appropriately use an electronic device that functions as assistive technology that is necessary for a student's education and that is required or authorized under an individualized education program, IEP, or a Section 504 plan.
Students shall be informed of this policy annually via student handbooks.
Thank you very much. Any questions or commentaries for the proposed policy? Hearing none, yes?
Yes, I have just a question and, so, if we look at the language, it says they are, with regard to theft, damage, or misappropriation, the school basically is not going to get involved in that. Am I understanding that correctly? So then, when we have language that says if a district official suspects that a student has inappropriately used or violated the policy in any way, I'm presuming that theft, does, is theft included or not included in that? So I guess my question gets to, what if some student said, student A says student B stole my phone? Does the district get involved in that dispute? Would that be an official or a resource officer? Would that be considered a violation that they would participate in? Or is that outside of what the school's going to be involved in?
Ms. Coler, would you respond to that question?
It's probably an if-then answer. If the theft took place at school, then that's a student behavior. We don't allow theft of anything. So then we would follow up with that. If somebody, you know, a classmate stole my phone while we were at Pizza Hut last night, that's a community issue and that's not something that the school would be involved in.
So then what if it's, I can't find my phone, I suspect somebody stole it?
That happens. And so this is one of the things that we say is, if you bring those things to school, it is at your own risk and you are responsible for keeping it near you or with you. We might, if that seemed viable, a principal might chase that down. But in general, if you bring things from home, they are your responsibility to keep track of during the day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other question? Hearing none, then we will include this item in the agenda for next session for approval. Our last item for tonight is a request for future agenda items. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn tonight's session.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the Eau Claire area school board. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067 or online at valleymediaworks.org.